All right, thanks Brian, and I apologize to everyone for being a good 15 minutes late. But this is budget night being approved, so we were trying to get the last budget hearing in. So with that, we don't have any announcements tonight, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're going to start with an invocation from Dr. Jones tonight. If anyone will please stand, and this will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Bow your heads. Thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day. Thank you for this city and what it means to all of us. We appreciate all of the wonderful acts of kindness that we see every day in our city. We thank you for all these people that are up here serving the community, because we love the community. We thank you for all of the city employees that move the city ahead, and I want to say thanks to all the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Everyone will face a flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Appreciate you doing that for us. Ms. Salterfield, please call roll.
Yes, sir.
Here.
Counselor Wolfertson. Counselor Sims.
Here.
Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Nelms.
Here.
Counselor Andrus.
Here.
Counselor Harden.
Here.
And President Wyatt.
Here.
You got one absent, but you have a court.
All right, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of September 12, 2022. I would entertain a motion and second to dispense with the reading of those minutes and approval of the same.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Ms. Nelms. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As are approved 10 to zero. Next, we have board vacancies, and we did have a couple of things closed. First, we had the mental health authority that closed, but, and we, we're going to deal with that one next time, because we did have some questions about it, but with the budget and everything, we need to deal with that one next time. So we also had a beautification board, Ward 2 position. Does anyone know if we got any applicants on that? Melody wasn't sure. She's been a little tied up.
From my understanding, we did not have any applicants, so I spoke to the Ward 2 counselors about reopening that position for another four weeks.
Okay. So that will put us...
Thank you for having me back on that one. I'm hoping you have my back.
October 24th.
On that one.
That's right. October, so we will reopen that for, until 4:30 PM on October 24th.
And thank you, Counselor Sims.
All right. We do have one addition to the agenda tonight. It will go on committee referral agenda. It will be item 260922, request for adoption of ordinance designating annual holidays for employees, and that will be going to finance.
Mr. President.
Yes.
2610?
Yeah.
So 26, is there areas 2609?
Yes, sir.
Nope, thank you for doing that. Yes, 2610.
Which one's 26?
2609.
Yeah, no, it'd be 27.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 26, 27.
Yeah, it'd be 27. Or do you say 26? It's at the bottom of the committee referral agenda, request for consideration of many children, and it's for a figure of adult. Oh, okay, sorry. You are through.
Hang on. I think I see what happened.
It should be 27.
Let me just look at something to make sure.
We skipped 25.
Melody, I think that what happened is that that item that got added at the last minute did not make it on the version that you and I were working from.
That's right, sorry about that.
So that's it, yeah. Yeah, so that'll be 2709. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
270922.
You got to add that all the way.
Yeah, we were just looking at an old copy of the agenda, that's all. No, no problem. All right, so with that addition, I would entertain a motion and second for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Waltney, second by Ms. Gere, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved 10 to zero. All right, which brings us to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion and second for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved 10 to zero as well, which brings us to the old business agenda. First item, 100522, public hearing continued from September 12, 2022, at 6:00 PM to consider annexation into the city of Homewood for 314 Happy Lane, brought to us by Ketchum Properties and Melody Salter and Robert Brigitte. Is that, I understand it, since I was not here last, at our last meeting?
That's my fault, Mr. President.
No, no, that's fine, that this public hearing was opened and continued, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So with that, the public hearing remains open. If there's anyone here to speak for or against this item, you're welcome to come up at this time.
There's a signing sheet right there, do you mind just signing in?
Absolutely.
You're Mr. Ketchum, right?
Aye.
You don't have to push a lot of never, I'll get it now.
Good evening. We've got a, I guess from the last meeting, we had some questions that were, arose mainly to do with the road, and I was able to seek out some clarification and have a basic slide here. I was able to get up, or backing up, biggest concern, same that came about was the access, the road, who owns the road, who's going to take care of the road, how big the road is, fire department, can sanitation department get down the road? So the road is all the way down Happy is maintained by Jefferson County. I was able to get with Ken Boozer, he's the county traffic engineer for Jefferson County. He was gracious enough to shoot me back an email that summarized our conversation. And to paraphrase even more from that conversation is that they will continue to maintain the road. The only thing that would change that is if properties on either side of the road, so my across the street neighbor, if they were to ask and receive annexation to Homewood, then from that point where two adjacent properties touch the road, that point forward would be the responsibility of the city of Homewood's maintenance. Currently, obviously, our property would be the only one on the road, and there is no plans for, you know, others to annex, but that is something for everybody to be aware of, that if it's on either side of the road, then it would be. Also was able to slide, not my best editing there, go, well, we'll just do fire. I was able to get with Chief Broadhead, he was able to go and look at it. Don't believe he's here tonight.
I don't see him.
I don't see him. He had mentioned he was going to send in his report on what his findings were.
Yeah, so, well, I tell you what, why don't you finish with yours, and then I've got some information from the fire department and garbage.
Even better, yeah. So in talking with him, his summary was that the road was in good shape, the road is, and I went out, and these are some measurements of it, between 18 and 20 feet wide, that they could get down. His request was a turnaround, and if you go back one slide, you can see, gosh, it's so faint, right there, it's hard to see, but in this bottom left-hand corner right here, we've got a, this is not showing up well on the screen, but we've got a turnaround right there, that would be the radius on our property for the trucks to turn around. It's a 50-foot radius is the, per what we could look at, the size that we would need for a garbage truck or a fire truck to be able to turn around. Yes, and the, the, yeah, would be just, turnaround would just be here, kind of where that arrow is to your right, the turnaround would go just past there, just short of those trees right there, beyond that existing house that's there. The fire hydrant is maintained by Birmingham Waterworks Board, that also was mentioned and came up during the last meeting, is that he would maintain that, and it is theirs, and they do maintain it, and was able to confirm that as well.
I'm confused about that, because they don't maintain any fire hydrants.
The information that I got from the fire department was that it was maintained by Rocky Ridge.
Okay, I was about to say.
Sorry.
The Waterworks Board owns it, but they don't.
But they don't maintain it.
My apologies, yes, yes, sorry. Own Birmingham Water, maintain, right. And then, next slide, I think it's the final one.
Brian?
Brian, is there one more slide?
There's one more slide, I think.
One more slide after sanitation. And I guess lastly, there were some, you know, concerns about if there's, you know, potential for school crowding's or, you know, what precedent may be set, although I couldn't, I couldn't find anything in bylaws that stated precedent was set with one property. I didn't really see much as to what Homewood's, I guess, directives are for annexation, but in looking at these properties on Happy Lane, there's currently, you can see there only a handful of homes, there's six homes, and I know three of them do not have full-time residents that are living in there, so there's very minimal, you know, potential impact there. Those were, I think, the highlights, and if I've forgotten to address any other concerns, I'm happy to do those as well.
Okay. Like I said, I do have some information from garbage and fire, but let me just check, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, here's, here's what was reported to me, is that, some of which you've already addressed, both garbage and fire were concerned about a turnaround. The fire department is obviously concerned that there's a turnaround big enough for a fire truck. I don't know if they've looked at your drawing yet, see if that's sufficient. I haven't heard anything about the drawing until I just saw it, so I don't, I can't speak to that, it's whether what's currently being proposed is sufficient. There was also a concern about, particularly with garbage, about the wear and tear on the road with the weight of the garbage trucks coming through twice a week, and whether the road was sufficient to meet our standards to handle the weight of the fire, of the garbage trucks. And then lastly, fire had a concern about what we were talking about at the end, which was the fire hydrant. That being maintained by Rocky Ridge means that our fire department is not maintaining it, which means that there has to be, were there to be a fire, you have to get Rocky Ridge to join in the issue so that the fire hydrant, so that they can get water from the fire hydrant. So, which takes extra time, which is obviously a big deal to a fire department. So, so anyway, those were the concerns that were voiced to me about, from garbage and fire. Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Smith?
I do. So I actually was over there the other day, we have a storage unit and a little storage thing that's right down the street from Happy Lane, so I thought, while I'm here, I'm going to drive down the street.
Sure.
So I will say, I drive an AccurRDX, and that road is thin. I don't care what they say the measurements are, especially down toward the end, it gets really thin. And I did verify with Berkeley Squires, that is indeed a Jefferson County road, so essentially, he would, first of all, we would have to even get permission to run garbage and everything else from Jefferson County to do that, because it's not our road. It has been recently paved, and Berkeley pointed out that if we were to do damage to the road, which I'm going to go ahead and tell you, a 10-ton garbage truck is going to do damage to a newly paved road, we would then be responsible for the cost of repaving and repairing any damage that was done, that would be on us. And so then I also asked, because I was curious how many other properties could potentially request annexation if y'all were approved, because I'm going to go ahead and say it, people will be like, oh, you mean I can annex into Homewood and my property values are automatically going to go up? They're going to do it if they can. There are one, two, three, four additional properties that could potentially ask for that, who are adjacent to the, they have a connection to Homewood property line. And, and I appreciate that y'all have thought about the idea of putting in a turnaround, because I actually drove all the way down to the dead end, and there was actually someone sitting on the porch of the little farmhouse, I don't know who that was, there was somebody sitting out there, and they had their cars parked in front of the house and on the end of the street. I had nowhere to turn out, I had to literally back myself out, all the way back down to where that little intersection is, so that I could get myself turned around and get out of there. It just, I have a lot of concerns about the, the resources and now knowing about the fire hydrant, because I think that was one of our questions, knowing that we really can't take over the possession of that fire hydrant, like it has to be Rocky Ridge's call, and they would have to be responding to any potential, you know, call that came in, just to get the water turned on for the fire department. And, you know, even if no one else over there got annexed in, nobody else asked, which I don't think is what would happen, but let's just say it doesn't happen, and it's only y'all, we're running garbage two times a week on a road that's not ours for one family, and it just seems like the resources that we would be expending wouldn't necessarily, I'm not sure the cost benefit ratio is working out.
Yeah, we would, we would be willing to do it third-party. I mean, if that's, if that's the issue, then we would be happy to, to get, you know, garbage trucks, excuse me, get garbage picked up. I mean, we have a good service that we use at our office, that we could have a can set out at the property and have it serviced, that's, we, that's, if that's the, the main concern, we'd be happy to alleviate that. I mean, there are already trucks running on it, you know, it gets picked up two times a week right now, so, I mean, there's already, there's already...
If anybody else is doing that, it's not...
Agreed, agreed, from a wear and tear perspective, I'm saying there's, there's already trucks driving.
Sure, sure.
But if, you know, if we feel like, or y'all feel like that, you know, the costs associated with running, running down there, running back is, is, you know, more than what y'all want to take on, then, I mean, we would be great with, you know, like I said, taking it third-party and doing it that way.
Just to be clear about what you're proffering, you're talking about you contracting with a third-party to handle your garbage?
Correct.
So that truck is not through anything wrong, but that truck's going to do some damage to the road as well. Are you also proffering to maintain the road from that damage? Because we're, I think the second problem that we're going to run into regardless of what kind of trucks are running on it, right, is, is a county road, who makes, who maintains the road with the damage that are caused by the trucks? And so I don't know if your proffer is, and I'm not saying it should or shouldn't be.
Right.
I just want to, want us to be clear about what you're proffering. Is it to contract third-party garbage and maintain the road for any damage caused by that third-party, or is it just one?
Well, and then, and then let me, let me just throw this little wrench in there, because you mentioned that if one of the other property owners adjacent to y'all did indeed, like your people across the street, come and ask for annexation, that then that portion of the road then becomes our responsibility. So then, we have taken on, even if you're using a third-party person, if the road gets damaged and is now undrivable by you or the trash people or whomever, now the city of Homewood is required to, is going to be responsible for the costs associated with those repairs, because now with the two adjacent properties, the road is ours.
Right. Once again, I mean, that's, those aren't the conditions right now, I mean, that would be taken into account, that's why, I mean, I think that's naming what those would be going forward, but I mean, for, for now, that wouldn't be the case, you know, I mean, that would be definitely taken into account later on.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, I think, I'm not sure that no one else over there is going to ask to be annexed, I guess is my thought process. It hasn't been asked, it hasn't been done yet.
Right, but, I mean, what I'm doing isn't unlocking properties that couldn't, couldn't already ask.
Oh, right.
And, and those, you know, nobody's asked, as far as I know, you know, Mulkey's development in 2008, I believe was the last year that, you know, something was even proposed. Obviously, we want nothing to do with that, we do not want, there was some chatter on the Facebook, we have no desire to do a subdivision, this is just a house. And I do think there's, you know, somebody asked me, what's the value for Homewood, and that's a good question, you know, let's say we take on the, and handle our sanitation, you know, there, you mentioned your storage unit, they recently asked to basically triple the height of it, and they wanted to add on to it and make it bigger, it would have disrupted Huntington subdivisions, I mean, you could see it out the back windows there. The homeowners association there voted, or not voted, excuse me, lent their support, I think, I forgot the exact numbers, but most everyone voted not to have the subdivision, excuse me, have the subdivision that, looking at a larger storage unit. And I, I mean, that's where I think if we, you know, bring this property into Homewood, it is bringing value to the Huntington subdivision behind it, and that now it's keeping it from being, I mean, if I was to sell it to someone else and they were to rezone it in Jefferson County, you know, it could be commercial, it could be whatever. So, you know, it is helping protect, you know, what we have there.
Can I go back to my question? I just want to, again, just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
I'm not telling you it should or shouldn't be proffered, I just need to know what the proffer is, whether it involves maintaining the road, or it's just contracting out garbage to a third-party.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, and I don't know all the dissections of this, I mean, absolutely getting, you know, I guess if Jefferson County was to say that there was a problem with the road and prove that it was done through us getting our trash picked up, then we would have to handle getting that fixed.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my point is, if, if this action, I want this council to know that if this action that you're requesting is taken, and there's a way that the city's going to become responsible for the road, we need to know that now, I guess is my point. And so if the, and again, not necessarily advocating one way or the other, I just want to be clear, if the third-party garbage truck causes damage to the road, and the fire trucks start saying, showing up and saying, hey, this road isn't going to handle our trucks, you know, the damage that was caused by the third-party, if Homewood's going to end up being responsible for it, then we need to know that now. If they're, if they're not, I agree, Jefferson County may, may take care of it, it's their road.
Right.
But if they don't, then the question is, who is going to do it? Because someone's going to have to do it. In other words, if, if Jefferson County says, we're not going to do it, and you say, you're not going to do it, well, now we've got a problem, right? Because now the city can't get a fire truck down the road, because the road isn't being maintained properly, but there's no one to, to fix the road, and then how do we service your house or any other house that shows up on the street in Homewood? And I guess that's my concern, is it, it's got to be, we need to know who's going to take care of the road when the road gets damaged.
Right, so, I mean, this can't be a unique situation where you have driving over a county road to get to Homewood, and, I mean, I would assume that it would fall under the same pretext of, you drive over said county road to get to Homewood, and if, you know, my delivery driver for supplies, you know, for bringing building materials to Homewood damages a county road, I mean, they don't, I mean, it would be the county within who would take care of it.
I agree with you that that's what should happen. I'm telling you that that has not always been the case.
Right.
And that's why I'm concerned about what happens if the county says, we're not going to fix the road. That, that's my concern.
Right, which, which I think is, I mean, sure, it's a valuable concern, I don't think it's a unique concern to this property.
I, I understand. Again, I'm not advocating for one way or the other, I'm just trying to be clear that we know what we're voting on, whether or not you are proffering to maintain the road in addition to the contract of garbage, or whether you're not. It doesn't matter, I'm not trying to get you to do one or the other. A proffer is whatever you want to make. I can't impose a proffer on you, nor would I try, but I do think it's important that we understand what we're voting on, and so that's the only reason I'm asking.
Right, and, and taking on the expense of maintaining a road for a single home as a homeowner is, you know, that's not why I pay taxes, I pay taxes for the road to be maintained.
Absolutely.
So I would not offer to maintain the turnaround, yes.
Okay, all right. All right, any other questions? Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the, did we address the, the fire situation? Like, I didn't realize that Rocky Ridge would have to respond in, in tandem with Homewood.
So it...
I was trying to understand.
It's in the fire district.
Yeah, it's within Rocky Ridge's fire district, and that hydrant is included in that. So even if our, as I understand it, if our fire department responds, they will at least have to communicate with Rocky Ridge about using that, that hydrant. What all is involved in that communication, I can't tell you, but that's part of the issue, or if some, if they get there and something's wrong with the hydrant, now they got to get Rocky Ridge to, it's, it's not like if there's a, it's, it's just an additional step from if there's a hydrant in Homewood. It's not that it can't be done, it's not that, but they felt the need to relay that, I, I'm, to my understanding, because it can take additional time, and they want everyone to know that on the front end, including the homeowner, obviously.
Okay.
And, you know, minutes count when you're, when you got a fire, so that, that's where that's coming from. It's not meant, I don't think it's meant to say this is impossible to do, it's just, it can cause, problems could arise.
And I, and I don't even know if it's possible to, to take on a fire hydrant from another fire district, but I will say, the chief has been very clear about, he doesn't want to take on any additional fire hydrants.
Correct.
We have turned down those requests recently, because we're already paying for a lot, and we don't want to pay for anymore.
Mr. Wolfertson?
I just wanted to kind of highlight a quick story from Friday evening, actually, sorry, it was last Wednesday. Anyway, I was, I rode my son out to soccer practice, out at the soccer fields, he's up at Six Acre Field, behind the baseball fields. There were two cars that had clearly been in a, you know, bumper to bumper, right there at the, at the intersection of Oxmore and Oxmore, West Oxmore and Oxmore. At that time, dropping him off before 6 o'clock, there was a Birmingham police officer there behind them. All the homes on that street are, are Homewood. That intersection is a confluence of Homewood, Birmingham, Jefferson County, so it's, it's kind of confusing. When I came back through, they were still there, Birmingham was still there. I went back to pick him up an hour and 30 minutes later. At that point, there was nobody, they were just sitting there with no, no police officers, and then by the time I picked him up and came home, about 15, 20 minutes later, now there was a Homewood police officer showing up. The lady, the two ladies that were there sat there for two and a half hours, waiting to try and get this resolved. I just, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm having a difficult time trying to understand how it kind of makes sense to put one house in back of a street that's not otherwise in the city's jurisdiction, and how that, to Walter's point, how that jurisdictional boundary will be enforced, and response times, and all of that as well. I, I just wanted to kind of share that, because that part of the neighborhood is clearly Homewood, but then, right there, at that intersection, it gets confusing, and people ended up spending hours waiting for that to be clarified for them, so.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Ms. Gere?
I just wanted to add one more bit of information, Mr. Ketchum, did you realize that there is a freshwater land trust property just to the south of your property? The Homewood Environmental Council let me know that, and just wondered if you'd be, I mean, they just wanted us to all be aware of that, and I'm not...
Is that what this is, right here, on the, right behind?
I believe so.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I think it's, if you throw the last slide back up there, I think we can, we can point to it.
They were, you know, they asked a lot of questions.
Brian, can you put the last slide back up?
Wonder about an impact study, or if you'd consider a conservation easement to protect the creek. I don't really know, I'm not, don't know what all sorts of things are done when you're, when you're up against an easement like that, but that would be something to consider.
Yeah, I, I believe it's this bottom property right there, the 433, is that where you're showing, Barry?
Mine says 537 West Oxmore Road, so that might not, I might not, it might not be the right one.
Okay, I, I believe it's, yeah, I believe it's that, I'm pretty, pretty sure it's that, that one on that slide right there.
I think that's correct.
Yeah.
At any rate, we, it is... I think that's correct. At any rate, we, it is just south of the property.
Yes, so.
There you go.
Yeah, if you leave that slot up for just a second, that's probably the prettiest part of the property, is, is down here, I call it down, but south, towards the bottom. And the plan right now is to, man, pretty much right where that circle is, that's right there, where it says 314 Happy Lane, that's the, that is the current plan. There's a knoll that sits right there, and the house would sit up on that, and then it, it looks out, and there's a, that bottom right there, you can kind of see it, it's a little bit darker, but there's a little bit of a pond that's right down there. So, yeah, I, I can't speak to the fact of whether or not we would, I don't know anything that is involved with putting, you know, land into a land trust, or how that, how that works, but the whole point of moving out here is to live in the woods, and to not disturb what's there. It is not to mow it all down and grow grass.
But you'd be willing to work with the conservation folks about, and, you know, protection and impact studies.
Yeah, yeah, we would, we would be all about, you know, what could we do to, to keep this, you know, natural habitat looking and acting, you know, like it does right now? I mean, there's, the trees there are, I mean, they're just massive, they haven't been touched in hundreds of years, they're fascinating, really good trees.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Make a motion for unanimous consent.
All right, Mr. Kendrick, will you give us the first reading?
Yes, sir. This is an ordinance annexing to the Sea of Homewood certain property described in the petition for annexation under Act Number 32 of the Legislature of the State of Alabama in 1964, here to file with the city. Whereas, on the 10th of May 2022, the owner of the property described here did file a petition with the City of Homewood requesting said property be annexed into the Sea of Homewood, whereas, city clerk has foreseen, set a public hearing for today, September the 12th, 2000, for on September 12th, 2022. It's City Hall at 6:00 PM, at which time, in place all persons administered may have an opportunity to be heard, whereas, petition was made pursuant to the provisions of the law of the State of Alabama, and advertised as required by the Code of Alabama. Whereas, a clerk has reported to the city that no protest or objections to the petition have been, has been filed, or delivered to the city clerk prior to the time of the public hearing, whereas, at the public hearing, the city council took evidence at the meeting of the truth of the matter set forth in the petition. Number one, it was, it is contiguous to this corporate, existing corporate limits of the Sea of Homewood, and that they have the owners of the property. Now therefore be ordained by the city council as follows. Number one, no objection, protest, or filing with file of the city clerk. Number two, that the matter set forth in petition are found and determined to be true and correct in all aspects. Number three, that the partial property described in the petition for annexation, namely 314 Happy Lane, described in Exhibit A attached here to be in the same as here, annexed into the Sea of Homewood. Four, that the city clerk be hereby ordered director to file a copy of this ordinance with a judge of probate, and to file a copy with the tax assessor's office of the Jefferson County. Number five, that the corporate limits of the city are hereby rearranged to include the property described in Exhibit 1, and section 6 of provisions, the ordinance shall become effective, meted upon adoption by the city council, approval of other matters otherwise becoming law.
All right, so, thank you, Mr. Kendrick, and we have a motion for unanimous consent by Ms. Smith, and a second by Mr. Alamon, and Ms. Saltzer, if you'll give us a, I'm sorry, Mr. Jones.
Remind everybody that, suddenly, sometimes we forget about procedure, but I mean, if you're just not voting for unanimous consent, we'll just move it to the next meeting to vote for. So I just want to share that with you, so if you want to dispense with it tonight, let's, let's vote yes. So that's all I was going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Smith and Alamon.
Okay.
All right, roll call vote, please, Ms. Saltzer.
Counsel Walton.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel Gier.
Yes.
Counsel Alamon.
Yes.
Counsel Wolverton.
Yes.
Counsel Sims.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel Smith.
Yes.
Counsel Nels.
Yes.
Counsel Andrews.
Yes.
Counsel Hardin.
Yes.
And President Wyatt.
Yes, all right, so that is unanimous consent, and now is there a separate motion for approval?
I'll make a motion for approval in the positive.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve for Ms. Andrews, second for Ms. Smith, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Saltzer.
Counsel Walton.
No.
Counsel Gier.
No.
Counsel Alamon.
Yes.
Counsel Wolverton.
No.
Counsel Sims.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
No.
Counsel Smith.
No.
Counsel Nels.
No.
Counsel Andrews.
No.
Counsel Hardin.
No.
And President Wyatt.
No, so that is defeated two, nine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so that ordinance is defeated. All right, next item, 090722, bid opening held for September 12, 2022, at 4:00 PM for Mecca Avenue sidewalks, brought to us by Kale Smith, and I believe Mr. Smith has something to report to us, and then we'll follow that up with a report from Mr. Jones.
For Mecca Avenue, I would, okay, so we didn't receive any bids when the project bid for Mecca Avenue. However, we negotiated with CBNA Construction, and they have agreed to do the project for $262,000.
All right, thank you, and these were discussed in budget hearings, but, Mr. Jones, I'm not sure what else you have to report, but wanted to give you that opportunity.
Sure, yeah, and I'm, I'm not sure in terms of procedure. We, we did receive that, and, and I agree with the recommendation to, to approve that, as the lowest, was the, the bidder was able to negotiate, and we have it in the budget, so I would, I don't know if we need to approve.
Let's, let's go ahead and make a motion, just to be sure.
Yeah, okay.
I have a resolution to tell, since it sets out that after that new bid, to be negotiated, to be determined.
Okay, that would be my motion to approve that.
All right, so we have a motion for Mr. Jones, second for Ms. Smith. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Kale.
Can I clarify?
Sure.
So obviously, the, the next item is also sidewalk that did receive a bid. My understanding is it was negotiated. Obviously, I'm a little partial, because it's in our work, but I'm just trying to make sure. Action on one has, does have impact on another.
So, the, what was discussed in budget was, because the Mecca sidewalk was on the list first, that that wouldn't, would be done first, and then we would do, and this will come up in the next item, I'll let, maybe stealing Kale's thunder a bit, but that we will, with the remaining money that's in the budget, we will do some portion of Delcris, he'll figure out where the logical cutoff is, this with, this under that amount, so we don't know exactly where, and then we will have to rebid that. And then we will have to rebid that portion of the project out again, because it's a different project now, and then the rest would come in the following fiscal year. Great, thank you. Sure. All right, any other questions about Mecca?
What was the budget amount originally? I can't find it by notes.
200.
200.
Okay, thank you.
262 is the number, the, the bid number, or the, the negotiated number. 200 is the
original number. All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and be Resolution 22147. All right, just get comfortable, Mr. Smith. Next item, 100722, bid opening held on September 12, 2022, at 4:10 PM for Delcris Drive sidewalks.
Everything you just said, I would recommending reject this bid, we'll split it, the project into phases and rebid at a later date.
Okay, all right.
How much is that first, how much is the first phase portion? What is that money that's left? 275.
So however far 275 will get us, basically.
To a, to a logical breaking point, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, and, and I will say, you know, I think, I spoke with Kale and President Wyatt last week, so there was discussion about, do we push this into the next budget cycle? I appreciate the compromise of getting something done right now, because I, I think we all recognize that we can keep that money, and then push it a year down the road, and then it's going to cost us more. So I'm glad that we can make some progress on something that's already been designed and, and looked at, and I know that many of our constituents will agree, so.
I think that was the mayor's idea.
Yeah, yeah, it's true, say, mayor deserves credit for that, that was all his idea. All right, Mr. Kendrick, we don't need a resolution, since he's rejecting the bid, correct?
I just have a motion to reject the bid.
Okay.
I'll.
All right.
Motion to reject the bid and split the project.
Second.
All right, motion for Mr. Wolverton, second for Mr. Walton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that is 11 to 0. Next item, 110722, bid opening held on September 12, 2022, at 4:20 PM for Huntington stormwater culvert replacement. Mr. Smith?
We received bids for $1,041,220. My recommendation would be to reject the bid, and as we, as we continue to evaluate our stormwater infrastructure.
Okay, all right, so if someone would.
That would be my motion, reject the bid.
Second.
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Smith, the second from Mr. Wolverton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0. 030822, bid date held on September 12, 2022, at 4:30 PM for College Avenue Stormwater Improvements, and Mr. Kale, I mean, Mr. Kale, excuse me, Mr. Smith. I knew it, Mr. Kale, I've got, grew up with him, but, Mr. Smith?
So for the College Avenue Stormwater Improvements project, we received one bid for $760,781 from Southeastern Silcoating, Inc. Since then, we have negotiated with Southeastern Silcoating for a total amount of $754,528. So the recommendation would be to reject the bid and accept the negotiated price from them.
754, what?
528. 528.
Mr. Jones, does that work with you in the budget?
It, well, it does. What we had discussed is, is really to try to get as many of these accomplished as we can, so we, we have budgeted 1,302,000 is what we have budgeted for stormwater replacement, and so we're, we're going to allow Mr. Smith to prioritize and come to us to tell us what can be done, what cannot be done. But that was, the recommendation from finance was to, to budget that one line item for stormwater.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to take that as a motion to approve. Second. For Mr. Jones, a second from Mr. Sims. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Kale, you know that leaves us $547,000.
Yeah, trust me, it will not be trouble, there will not be trouble spending it.
Make sure he knows the number.
I think the opposite.
Yes, exactly. I think, I think Mr. Smith would prefer more money than that, if we, if we can find some along the way. All right, so that'll, that was 11 to 0, and be Resolution 22148. Next item, 050822, public hearing set for tonight for, to consider revisions to the tree and landscape ordinance, also brought to us by Mr. Smith. We're going to start with a report from P and D, Ms. Andrews.
Yes, committee voted 5 to 0 to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counsel Nels and seconded by Counsel Sims.
And either Ms. Andrews or Mr. Smith, will y'all just give us a very, I mean, I know we've discussed this in committee a good bit, but.
Correct.
Just, because I know we're only dealing with, with a couple, or a few items here, if you, and I want to make sure we stay on task with, in terms of subject. So if you would, just outline what we're dealing with tonight.
Sure, so briefly, this adds three exemptions to the, to the tree and landscape ordinance. I'm sorry, two exemptions and one definition. The, the definition is just to clarify, artificial turf is not being a structure. And the other one, the other two exemptions are for building permits issued for interior alterations and renovations where work is less than 50% of the building area. So think of a, a strip center where, where the end unit is trying to build out the space, they're not going to, that entire site won't be made to be in compliance with the tree and landscape ordinance. And then the second one, the second exemption, is to allow for an applicant to pay $750 per tree over 25% of the required minimum tree density that they have to meet. Does that make sense?
It does.
No. Timmy, explain that to me, over 25% of the minimum density? So, but based on your lot size, so one, one acre, if you have a one-acre lot, you're required to have 16 trees. So if you have a quarter-acre lot, you're required to have four trees. Right. If you, if you have a blank lot, and you build a house, then you will only need to plant one tree on a quarter-acre lot, but you would have to pay for three additional trees, at the cost of $750 per tree.
And that goes into the fund for the city.
The tree fund, that's correct.
That can then put trees elsewhere.
The, the replacement fund.
And can I ask a question? Because I know, I'm not on this committee, but y'all, we're having a discussion about the turf situation, removing that, making the definition clear that, that turf is not considered a structure any longer, but Counsel Walton also mentioned something about taking turf, like, off the front yard, or did we decide to push that down the road?
I think we decided to push that down the road, so it wouldn't restart the process, but making a prohibition of turf in front yards.
Was something that was interesting, okay, but that's not happening today.
Mr. President, I have that correct, right? We decided to do that later.
Correct, that was, because we would have had to.
Start this whole thing all over.
Correct, and this item is remaining in committee as well.
So that we can make additional changes.
Correct, that'll be in the next, I would anticipate that, if the committee wants to, that'll be in the next round. Yeah, Mr. Sims?
I would just make one clarification, that we could essentially approve the changes with the exemptions, and not, and not approve the turf definition at this time. And the reason I bring that up is because if we do approve the turf definition at this time, then that'll prevent those from going to the BZA for approval, and if we want to, you know, somehow handle those in the interim, then it may be smart not to include those in the definition.
You are correct, we can do the two exemptions tonight, and not the definition, so that we can revise the definition and bring that with the next group, if that's what council wishes to do.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree.
I'll make that motion, is it?
Well, we haven't even had the public hearing yet, so.
I'm sorry, sorry, sorry.
I did want to just clarify real quick, the, the 750, towards tree replacement elsewhere in the city, is that earmarked in a certain way, specifically for that purpose?
Yes, is earmarked, it goes into a specific fund that only buys trees to be planted in the city.
And then, I guess, who's in charge at that point? Because I know we had discussion last week about, you know, do we plant trees in the city right away? Do we find other yards, or do we find?
The only place that we know we can plant it is city property, or city right away, so that, that's, that's the only place we have permission today, so that's what it's, so that's what it speaks to, because we don't.
And I think, I think Berkeley said that he and Bram would work together to kind of identify places.
Sure.
That might make sense for those to be planted.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was just trying to.
Yeah, 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 I think there's going to be some thoughtful.
Refresh my memory on what the process would be from there, and who'd be involved.
Mr. Walton, did you have something else?
Yeah, just along those lines, that's the piece that I had the most concern with, was essentially letting someone have an out on, on the place where we can have the most impact on our canopy, which is private property. There's only limited number, there's a limited number of places we can plant trees in city right away that doesn't obstruct sightlines, or, you know, is already crowded with trees today. So, I mean, even last time, when we had a city planting, we used the school's property as a way to basically use our budget. So I'm concerned about that, and secondarily, outrunning today, I ran across the property, just completely clear cut, huge base of a tree left on the property, and it just kind of opened my eyes that, that's, you know, that happens a lot, whether we like it or not, and we need to be sure that our ordinance is tailored in a, in a way that allows us to have the most impact on the tree canopy, because most of these houses, if you were going to be in the house for three, five, 10, maybe 15, 20 years, but more than likely, they're not there for the duration of the tree. So I think, I would like to propose, us taking that, requiring them to do 50% of the rule.
That's what I was going to say.
And then, that the perk to buy out of the tree being placed needs to be $1,500. So we can get the largest caliber tree we can get, and have the biggest impact on the canopy long-term.
And just from a procedural standpoint, if we do that, I think what we would need to do is not approve that item as well tonight, and send it back to committee, because I think that would probably be seen as a substantial change that we would need to republish.
I thought it would be primarily mechanics.
Are you saying absolutely to me, or?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and, and the reason being that I think it probably affects their property in a way that, so I think. Yeah. And, and the reason being that I think it probably affects their property in a way that, so I think we would have to do that. I'm not saying that's a bad thing.
I don't know if everybody else agrees with me, but that's for my...
Is that just for the fifty percent or both? Meaning, meaning, or, or the fifteen hundred dollars?
Either, either way, I think it probably happens. And, and I'll say this, part of the reason that we were anxious to get these in front of the council was, as, as I understood it, item two, the second item you mentioned about interior alterations. That's the one that's really causing the biggest problem right now.
No question.
And that's the one that we wanted to make sure we were dealing with as expeditiously as possible.
Absolutely.
If the other two go back and stay in committee for more work and the council wants to do that, you know, that's certainly fine. Quite frankly, even if they want, even if you want to do that with number two, that's fine. I would caution against number two if we're, because there, there is a, a time consideration with that one, more so than the other two.
So can I, can you clarify on, on number two? It's more, we said more than fifty percent of the entire structure, whatever the structure is. Is that correct? If it's, if it's less than fifty percent, they do not have to come into compliance. If it's fifty percent or more, then that lot would have to come in full compliance.
So it's for maintenance or interior alterations and renovations where the work area is less than fifty percent of the building area?
The building structure.
The total square footage of all the floors or exterior site improvements less than five thousand dollars.
Okay. All right. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing.
I've already motioned. Sorry.
Okay. So I'm going to open this public hearing and ask if there's anyone to speak for or against these three items. That's all we're dealing with, with the tree ordinance tonight. And if you, if there, you wish to speak to him, come on up. If not, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing.
So the motion now is for unanimous consent?
Yeah, let's have the first reading first.
Okay.
And then we'll take that.
Okay. This is an ordinance to amend Article Two entitled definitions and to amend Section F entitled exemptions of Article Romanum eleven entitled tree protection and landscape of Appendix A titled zoning ordinance of the Code of Ordinances. Read ordained as follows. Section one, that Article Two entitled definition is amended to provide for the following definitions for artificial turf. A. Artificial turf synthetic materials made to resemble natural grass. Artificial turf will not be considered a necessary structure if a detailed engineering section is submitted to and approved by the city engineer. Section two, Section F entitled exemptions of Article eleven entitled tree protection and landscape of the zoning ordinance is amended to read as follows. Section F exemptions, all trees removed by utility company and state agencies which are located within a public right, excuse me, within a public road drainage right away or permanent utility and drainage agent shall be exempt from the requirements of this article. Section two, building permits issued for maintenance or interior, interior alterations and renovations where the work area is less than fifty percent of the building area, total square footage of all floors, or the exterior site improvements less than five thousand dollars as estimated by the building official and the Department of Engineering and Zoning shall be exempt from the requirements of this article. Section three, in lieu of satisfying the requirements for landscaping required by this article, the applicant or homeowner may satisfy the provisions of this article by paying to the city at the time of the application a sum equal to seven hundred and fifty dollars for any tree over twenty-five percent of the M. T. D. For example, if the M. T. D. is four trees, one tree shall be installed and seven hundred and fifty dollars per tree may be paid for the remaining three trees. If two trees are required, one tree shall be installed and seven hundred and fifty dollars may be paid for the remaining tree. The funds will be paid into the tree replacement fund, which shall be used solely by the city to replant trees in the city. Section three, all other provisions of the zoning ordinance except set out above shall remain in full force and effect. Section four, September twenty-sixth, six o'clock P. M. is the time and place for a public hearing at which time all party, all interested parties may be heard. Section five, any part of provision or declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by Court of Compete Jurisdiction, all other parts or provisions not thereby affected shall remain in full force and effect. Section six, ordinance shall become effective upon adoption by the city council approval of the mayor's otherwise becoming law.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Just a question about procedure because I don't know that we've ever had, had done this before. The motion for unanimous consent, does it need to be, if, if someone wants to make it as to only certain items, is that the way that motion would be made?
The motion for unanimous consent would be to spell out what ordinance provisions they want to consider tonight.
Got it.
And it can't be substantial change, certainly more prospective than what we are...
Got it.
I, I will make the motion for unanimous consent for the item in regards to interior renovations equalling less than fifty percent and, or exterior, less than five thousand dollars, five thousand dollars or less.
Second.
You're going to leave in the part of the utility companies, you didn't speak to that, that's what's in the ordinance.
As part of that same exemption.
Yes.
Okay. So we, we wanted to leave in the section one, which is the definition for, for artificial turf and provisions in Section F to deal with meeting the minimum tree density requirement of the pavement.
That is not part of my motion, correct?
Yeah. Mr. Sims?
I guess regards to Section F, which has to do with minimum density, I just have a question for Mr. Smith, which is, does it ma, does this exemption, is there any reason to include it tonight as a baseline percentage and then build upon it with a later revision? Or is, like, what currently happens in these circumstances?
Which, which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about the to pay seven hundred and fifty per tree over twenty-five percent minimum density.
Okay. And what was the question?
The question is, if we say it was included in the ordinance tonight, does that establish a baseline that we can build upon that is better than the existing condition? Or is it best to just not include the revision at this time and to get it the way we want it to be? Does that make sense?
It does. We would have to change it again through this process.
What's currently, I think what Councilor Sims is saying is what is the, what is the current ordinance provided in terms of?
You have to plant the trees. You don't have an option to pay for it.
Required to.
And that's why I thought we were basically stepping it back with the fifty percent closer to where it is today. That's why I didn't think it was a substantial change.
It, it's, the way to view it is that it's a substantial change from what we published. So if, if, if someone out there is reading it and is changing their rights from what was published, yeah.
That answers my question. Thanks so much.
I understand the reasoning, but yeah. Okay. All right. Ms. Andrus, you made the motion, correct? But I don't think, for unanimous consent as to the second item, and I...
Councilor Gualtney, second.
Did you? Thank you.
Second.
Ms. Salter, if you will give us a roll call vote on unanimous consent, please.
Mr. Burgett.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Burgett, y'all switched on me.
Or he can do it in high voice.
No, you got to go get her. I'm sorry. Councilor Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Geer?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nels?
Yes.
Councilor Andrus?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt? Yes. All right. So that is eleven to zero. Now we entertain a motion for approval.
Now, I will make that motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Mr. Sims. Another roll call vote, please. Mr. Burgett? What?
We're voting on how it was bottomed by...
Correct. Only the second, only the second item dealing with the exemption for interior.
And the utility.
And the utilities. Roll call vote for adoption. Councilor Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Geer?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nels?
Yes.
Councilor Andrus?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt? Yes, and that one is also eleven to zero and that will be ordinance twenty-eight, forty-nine. All right. Next item, oh five oh five twenty-two. Public hearing set for October ten, two thousand and twenty-two at six P. M. for vacation of right away at Sixteenth Street adjacent to twenty-nine oh one Central Avenue. Brought to us by Lee and Chelsea Maniscalco and Wyatt Pugh of our Building Department. We will carry that item over for the public hearing on October tenth. Next item, public hearing set for October tenth for consideration of a front yard fence variance at sixteen oh four Roseland Drive. Brought to us by Debbie Freeman and Wyatt Pugh. We will also carry that item over for the public hearing on October tenth. Ten oh nine twenty-two. Another public hearing set for October tenth, two thousand and twenty-two at six P. M. for consideration of a sign variance at nineteen nineteen Twenty-Eighth Avenue South, Suite one forty-one. Brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. We will carry that item over as well for the public hearing on October tenth. Twelve oh nine twenty-two. Public hearing set for October ten, two thousand and twenty-two at six P. M. to consider declaring the property located at one twenty-one Summit Parkway a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances nineteen ten and seventeen fifty excessive growth. Brought to us by Scott Cook, our code enforcement officer within the inspections Department. We will also carry that item over for the public hearing on the tenth. Thirteen oh nine twenty-two. Public hearing set for October ten, two thousand and twenty-two to consider declaring the property located at one thirty-nine State Farm Parkway a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances nineteen ten and seventeen fifty excessive growth. Also brought to us by Scott Cook. We will carry that item over for the hearing on the tenth. Eleven oh nine twenty-two. Public hearing set for October twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two at six P. M. for consideration of the Homewood Abatement Board's recommendation for condemnation of the dwelling structure at one seventeen Henna Street. Brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. We will carry that item over, over for the public hearings set for October twenty-fourth. Fifteen oh seven twenty-two. Public hearing set for November fourteen, two thousand and twenty-two at six P. M. for consideration of annexation for Board of Education property into the city of Homewood. Brought to us by Robert Burgett and Melody Salter. We will carry that item over for the public hearing set on November fourteen. Ten oh eight twenty-two. Request to consider paying tiered year-end bonus contingent upon the city completing fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two with a general fund surplus. Brought to us by the mayor. And we will start with a report from finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, the committee met and as we've done for many, many years recommending this, so it was on a vote of four to zero to approve. I'm happy to go over what the tiers are if anyone would like to, to get information on that. We appreciate our employees. That goes without saying. So we grossed this up, meaning if you've had twenty-plus years of service, we're grossing up a one-time payment of two thousand dollars. So we're paying all the taxes. And looking at longevity, we have, we have incredible longevity here. But we're all for it in, in finance and the total amount is three hundred and sixty-five thousand contingent upon the, the bonus, I mean, the surplus for the city.
All right. Thank you very much. We have a motion from finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eleven to zero and will be resolution twenty-two, one forty-nine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing that to us.
Yes.
Uh, next item, oh one oh nine twenty-two. Request for consideration to declare the following item surplus. A two thousand and fourteen Chevy Tahoe with the last four VIN number one nine nine seven, a two thousand and twenty-one Dodge Durango with the last four, the VIN number nine eight five two, and some miscellaneous I. T. equipment. It's brought to us by Gordon James, Chief Tim Ross, and Justin Bush. And another report from finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, the Finance Committee met September nineteenth and voted five to zero unless to recommend approval of the item.
All right. Mr. Kendrick, can we have a first reading?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to declare certain personal property and equipment surplus hereby established and declared that the following described, personal property cities no longer need for public or municipal purposes and therefore declared surplus property. I won't repeat everything Mr. Wyatt said, but it says two thousand and fourteen Chevrolet Tahoe, two thousand and twenty-one Dodge Durango, and miscellaneous I. T. equipment which is listed attached to the resolution. Section two, the mayor and the city clerk B. are hereby authorized and directed to dispose of the two vehicles by transfer to travelers as a part of an insurance claim and to dispose of miscellaneous I. T. equipment by auction to the highest bidder.
All right. Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion, a second for unanimous consent?
So moved.
So Mr. Gualtney, Mr. Gualtney with the motion and Mr. Wolverton with the second. And another roll call vote, please. Mr. Burgett? Yes, sir. Oh. Councilor Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Geer?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon? Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes. Yes.
I'm sorry. Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nels?
Yes.
Councilor Andrus?
Yes.
Councilor Hall, um, Hart, I'm sorry, Councilor Andrus, not Councilor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt? Yes. All right. So that is ten to zero. Sorry. I thought I was getting a look when I missed something.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion from Mr. Jones, a second from Mr. Gualtney, and another roll call vote, please. Mr. Burgett? Councilor Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Geer?
Yes.
Councilor, is that, okay, Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nels?
Yes.
Councilor Andrus?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt? Yes. All right. So that was ten zero as well and will be ordinance twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty-eight fifty. All right. Next item, oh two oh nine twenty-two. Request to amend fiscal year, and, and I think there was a typo in the budget, I mean, in the, the agenda. But it's a request to amend fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget for the Police Department. Brought to us by Chief Ross. And another report from finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mr. President, the Finance Committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item.
All right. We have a motion from finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is ten to zero and will be resolution twenty-two, one fifty. Oh three oh nine twenty-two. Request for additional funding to make repairs to sanitation truck. Brought to us by Gordon James of our Fleet Maintenance Department. And another report from finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, the Finance Committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval.
All right. So we have a motion from finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think we're back to eleven to zero this time. And that will be resolution twenty-two, one fifty-one. Oh four oh nine twenty-two. Request to authorize the mayor to sign Aldott Supplemental Agreement number one for C. Mac nine eight oh two nine one one Shades Creek Greenway Phase Two. Brought to us by Cale Smith. And another report from finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, the Finance Committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval.
All right. We have a motion from finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also eleven to zero and will be resolution twenty-two, one fifty-two. Oh five oh nine twenty-two. Request for consideration to permit, to permit removal and replacement of two trees in the city right away at seven thirteen Morris Boulevard. Brought to us by Jeffrey Ketchum and Wyatt Pugh. And we will start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes. Committee met last week, voted five to zero to recommend approving removal of the two trees with replacement with two others pending the indemnification agreement being signed. The motion was made by Ms. Geer and seconded by Ms. Andrus.
All right. So we have a motion from Special Issues. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also eleven to zero and will be resolution twenty-two, one fifty-three.
Mr. Wyatt, I'm going to interrupt, but the resolution you just adopted, as it was published to you on Friday, had an attachment that says that the replacement trees would be approved by the city arbors. Scott Cook sent me a diagram today with his designation. Which, which location do we want to include?
Got it. So in other words, we're not just talking about what kind of trees, we're talking about where they're planted.
That's correct.
Okay. I think that the, I think that the, because the city arbors is not actually a city employee, it should come from Scott Cook. And if he feels the need to confer with the city arbors, he's welcome, certainly welcome to do so, but I think it would come from Scott Cook.
All right. Thank you.
All right. There was a duplicate item on the agenda, oh five oh eight twenty-two. If anyone's following along, that one's already been handled. So the next item is oh six oh nine twenty-two. Request to amend ordinance twenty-seven fifty-four, an ordinance to regulate stormwater management post-construction. Brought to us by Cale Smith. And we'll start with a report from Planning and Development. Ms. Andrus?
Yes, the committee voted four to zero to recommend approval after hearing from Cale Smith. The motion was made by Councilor Sims and seconded by Councilor Wolverton.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Kendrick, if you'll give us another first reading, please.
Yes. It's an ordinance to amend Section three point one entitled design standards of Section three entitled post-construction B. M. P. design of ordinance two seven five four previously adopted by the city council on the twelfth day of August, two thousand and nineteen. Read ordained as follows. Section one, Section three point one entitled design standards of Section three, post-construction B. P. B. M. is, design of ordinance twenty-seven fifty-four previously adopted or is amended to read as follows and sets out the, the amendment. Section two, that all of the provisions of ordinance twenty-seven fifty-four except set out above shall remain in full force and effect. Section three, any part of provisioned ordinance declared to be unconstitutional... Section three, any part of provisioned ordinance clear to be unconstitutional or invalid by court of competent jurisdiction, all other part of provisions remain in full force and effect. Section four, the ordinance is effective merely upon adoption by the city council, approval by the mayor's otherwise becoming law.
All right. Thank you. Entertained a motion and second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Alamon, and a roll call vote, please, Mr. Burgett.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harp?
Yes.
And President Wyatt.
Yes. All right. So, that's 11 to zero, and now entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Mr. Gualtney, and another roll call vote, please, Mr. Burgett.
Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harp?
Yes.
And President Wyatt.
Yes. All right. So, that's also 11 to zero, and will be ordinance 2851. Next item, 07 0922, request for consideration to work in the right-of-way adjacent to 407 Hollywood Boulevard and 2305 Montavalla Road. Brought to us by Melinda Sellers and myself. And we will start with a report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, the committee met September 19th and voted four to zero to recommend approval pending the indemnification agreement. The motion was made by Counselor Gier and seconded by Counselor Sims.
All right. So, we have a motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero, and will be resolution 22 154. Next item, 08 0922, request to set a public hearing for consideration to rezone 536 Cobb Street from GERD to West Homewood District. The applicant is James Parsons, who's with Shoal Engineering, the owner is Village Creek Development. This is to facilitate potential future development, and it comes to us from the planning commission with a vote of eight to zero with a favorable recommendation. Do you have a report, Ms. Andrus?
I do, yeah.
Okay. I'll let you go ahead and give your report now.
Sure. The committee voted five to zero to refer this item back to the full council to set a public hearing, but to carry over in committee for further discussion.
Okay.
The motion was made by Counsel Wolverton and seconded by Counselor Sims.
All right. So, we are going to set that public hearing for October 24, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. And then, obviously, we'll take it back up in committee as well. All right. Now for the big show. 17 0822, request for consideration of the mayor's budget presentation for fiscal year 2223. Brought to us by Mayor Patrick McCleskey. And we will start with a report from finance. Dr. Jones, I've got a number of these that we're going, I've got a couple of pages of these that we're going through, so, and I know one I need to insert. So, do you want to give an overall thing first?
Yes, sir. You know, I like to give-
Big picture.
-state of the union, big picture.
We appreciate it.
Yeah. If you'll indulge me with that, then we can get into each individual fund. But I always want to start by really thanking the finance committee, attended so many meetings, and all the other counselors that were at the meeting. They, you know, ate long meetings, many hours working through the budget. And I want to thank all the work that Robert and Melody put in, the department heads for submitting their budget to the mayor, all the work that you did, Mr. Mayor, JJ, and you, Council President, helped a lot in working through this budget. And I'll just say, in all my years, I've not seen such a really strong partnership that this council has with the mayor's office. And I think we work very closely together, and we work in the same direction, and that means a lot to me as we're working through the budget. So, I'll first say, it was a good, it's a good budget. I'm excited about what we're able to offer and what we're able to approve within the budget. So, I'll just give some high-level points here, so you'll kind of understand what we did work through. But it's a, obviously, it's a large budget. We had given a 5% COLA, very excited about that. That equated to almost 1.2 million, our dedication to our employees. We approved merits, and that's, was close to 300,000. We budgeted 5% increase on the insurance, and then come to find out last week, it was not 5%, it was 6.4%. So, we budgeted that as well. Keep in mind, the city of Homewood pays 3.6 million for insurance. That's just our portion for insurance. So, we continue to help our employees with that, so they do not have, you know, to worry about those increases in the health insurance costs. So, we handled that, and we passed earlier tonight, thank you for that, the year-end bonus for 365,000. I think employees really appreciate that. I've had many great comments from employees that appreciate that. And then, along the lines of health insurance, we continue to be committed to the pension. And, you know, as we, as everyone remembered, we converted from tier two to tier one, very large increase in payments for that, and, but our employees loudly said, "We really need that. We need that more than anything." And so, we passed that. So, our funding now for that is 3.5 million. That's our annual cost with a tier-one payment for the pension. We also included many exciting projects. As you saw early on the agenda earlier, we passed the Greenway, and that's almost paid for. We're budgeting CE and I this fiscal year, but we're going to get that back. The Pocket Park is also in capital, excited about that. We also talked about Delkris Mecca Sidewalks Police Vehicles. So, we have new police vehicles on the way. That's 420,000. I've ordered a fire engine. We have some other projects that also are excited. We have Reece Street, that's also part of that. I know Mr. Gualtney's been talking about that for a long time, and has been put off for a long time, too. So, we're excited about that.
It's coming. It'd take me three more years.
And then, in terms of projects that are, we're highly committed to, let me say, diverging diamond, 2.8 million for the diverging diamond. We're excited about partnership with Aldot and handling that. 18th Street West, we're, as you can see, we're making great progress on that. That was, that was a $1.4 million budgetary item. We also, as I mentioned earlier, the creek, the stormwater is a major issue, so we budgeted the 1.3 million for that. And then, almost 600,000 for creek walls. We have many creek walls that have come, have been collapsing. We also, our commitment within, within the general fund, we, this year again, are supporting the Sims Garden. So, we're helping them with that. They're doing a great job now as a 501(c)(3), so they're transitioning into that. So, lastly, I'll mention, we also have budgeted in here for Homewood to contract all of the ambulance service. So, we're very excited about that and what that's going to bring. So, we're moving forward on that. So, those are the, those are the highlights. And again, I mean, I just really appreciate all the hard work, and I apologize, there were several times we canceled a meeting, and then we reinstated it. And it's really, it was challenging this year, mainly because of the personnel board. And I'm not going to get on that again, but I'll just say, it makes our job so much harder. And when other cities, I talk to other cities, and they go, "Oh, we don't have to worry about personnel board." And I'm like, "Well, great, good for you." We do, and I just think it, it just adds a different level of challenge, because you feel like you have everything understood, and then, and then you don't. And then, we had to work in some of the new numbers for what the personnel board advised us was happening this year. So, we budgeted all of that. So, we've got lots of wonderful things. So, thank you for everybody who contributed to a really good budget. So, I'm very excited about it, as you can tell.
And, and thank you, Mr. Jones. Once again, you have done an amazing job of corralling all of us, getting us educated and up to speed where we need to be, and get everything organized in terms of meetings. And we greatly appreciate it. Don't know what we would do without you. So, well, let's start going through these. We'll start with fund number one, which is the COLA resolution. And we'll start with the report, we're just going to go through a report on finance for all these.
That's right, yeah.
And then, I believe finance will probably make a motion on all of them, and then we'll vote on each one individually.
That's perfect. Yeah, the finance committee met tonight, voted five to zero to approve this item.
All right. So, this is for the 5% COLA. We have a motion from finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to zero, and will be resolution 22 155. Next, we have a resolution to implement the Jefferson County Personnel Board required changes to certain job classes, classes, grades, and steps within public works, maintenance, fleet, parks, and rec, and traffic on their merit date. Yeah, that's when it will happen, it's on their merit date. And another report from finance.
Yes, sir. Five to zero approval from finance.
All right. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that one is also 11 to zero, and will be resolution 22 156. Next, we have Grants Fund, Fund Two. And a report from finance?
Yes, sir. The finance committee met, voted five to zero for approval.
All right. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to zero, and will be 22 157. All right. What are we on? Grants Fund?
Four.
Four? Seven-cent gas tax?
Mm-hmm. That's right. Seven-cent gas tax.
All right. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Finance voted five to zero for approval.
All right. So, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to zero as well, and will be 22 158. Which brings us to four-and-five-cent gas tax fund, Fund Five. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Five to zero approval from finance.
All right. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to zero, and will be 22 159. Next, we have the Board of Education Fund, Fund Six. Mr. Jones?
Five to zero approval from finance.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 11 to zero, and will be 22 160. Next, we have Debt Service Fund, Fund Eleven. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Finance voted five to zero for approval.
All right. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to zero, and will be resolution 22 161. Next, we have Capital Funds Project, Fund Twelve. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Finance voted five to zero for approval.
All right. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to zero, and will be resolution 22 162. Next, we have Environmental Escrow. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Five to zero approval from finance.
All right. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero, and will be resolution 22 163. Insurance Fund, Fund Fourteen. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Finance voted five to zero for approval.
All right. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to zero, and will be resolution 22 164. E-911, Fund Fifteen. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Finance voted five to zero for approval.
All right. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero, and will be resolution 22 165. Corrections Fund, Fund Twenty-One. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Finance voted five to zero for approval.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is resolution 22 166. Next, we have Corrections Fund Court Fund, Fund Twenty-Two. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Finance voted five to zero for approval.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is resolution, 11 to zero, and is resolution 22 167. Next, we have the Municipal Court Special Fund, Fund Twenty-Four. Mr. Jones?
Finance voted five to zero for approval.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one also, is also 11 to zero, and it'll be Resolution 22-168. Next, we have Inspection Technology Fund. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Finance voted five to zero for approval.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to zero as well, and it'll be 22-169. Uh, the GOW Construction Fund, uh, Fund Twenty-Six. Mr. Jones?
Sir, Finance voted five to zero for approval.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one is also 11 to zero, and it'll be Resolution 22-170. Judicial Administration Fund, Fund Twenty-Eight. Mr. Jones?
Uh, Finance approved, five to zero.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to zero, and it'll be Resolution 22-171. Somewhere, I have missed one. What do we have left, Mr. Jones? Looks like I've missed one, according to my...
Uh, I believe that was it.
Is that it? Did we catch all of them?
Yep, got 28. In the total, uh, if anyone counting, all these, uh, $112,603,750.
Thank you, everybody. All right. So, uh, that brings us to the Committee Referral Agenda, or the amended Committee Referral Agenda. I would entertain a motion, a second, for approval of the amended Committee Referral Agenda?
Second.
Motion for Mr. Gualtin, second for Mr. Sims. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved, 11 to zero, which brings us to other new business. 22-09-22, request to set a public hearing for consideration of front yard fence variances at 501 Oxmore Road, brought to us by Cindy Kirkpatrick and Wyatt Pugh. We will set that public hearing for October 10 at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 23-09-22, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a secondary front yard fence variance at 320 Oxmore Road, brought to us by Jason Russell of Homewood Hardware and Wyatt Pugh. Uh, that public hearing will also be set for October 10, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. 24-09-22, request for consideration of an ABC O-20 Restaurant Retail Liquor License for GM Marco Pizza LLC, doing business as GM 705, located at, and this is different from what was published, 705, it should be Oak Grove Road, uh, brought to us by Melody Salter. Um, Mr. Gualtin, I understand that we have received a letter of no objection from fire, but not police?
That's correct.
Okay. So, uh, any motion here would need to be offering no objection pending, uh, a receipt of a letter from Homewood Police Department?
I'm making motion, uh, pending a letter from Homewood Police Department with no objection to the license.
All right. We have a motion for Mr. Gualtin, a second for Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, you can.
Is that for the, is that for the news space?
The old ash.
Yeah, it's for the news space, their news space, okay, yeah.
That was, that was where the confusion in the address came. It's actually 705 Oak Grove, not Oxmore Road.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say.
Yeah. That's, that's where we got a little mixed up. All right. Uh, 25-09-22, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of September 13, 2022, through September 26, 2022, uh, brought to us by Robert Burgett and Melody Salter. Uh, Mr. Harden, Mr. Jones, is this Mr. Harden's final time?
This is his last time, so he was shedding a tear today.
Go see a professional about it. Yes, I, um, was able to, to review, uh, the vouchers for the period of September 13, uh, 2022, through September 26, 2022. I could not find Mr. Burgett, he was at lunch, so I, I, I got to Mr. Bischof, and he gave me the answers to all my questions. So I am requesting approval of those vouchers.
All right. We have a motion for Mr. Harden. Do we have a second? Second for Ms. Smith. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to zero, and it'll be Resolution 22-172. All right. Which, believe it or not, brings us to the end of the agenda. Mr. Mayor?
First of all, help there, Walter, take a look.
I, I don't think everybody understands how hard it is to go through a $112 million budget as easily as this group of people does. It really is very, very impressive. I mean, we do a lot of work going into it, but there's a lot of changes that have to go on, and going line item by line item, through so many different departments, and through so, through so many different funds. I just, I can't tell you how appreciative I am of the time, the consideration, the hours. And, I mean, frankly, you're getting phone calls from people in the public, you're getting phone calls from employees. Um, you know, everybody's got an opinion about what they feel the money should be spent on, and where the money should be spent, and it should go here, or it should go there. Um, and those are things that you guys have to deal with. So, again, I just, I can't say enough about this group. Um, I'm, I'm just so appreciative, certainly to Robert and Melody, and the entire Finance Department for everything that, that they had to deal with as well. Um, there's a lot of numbers, and that Personnel Board issue changed quite a bit, and they had to drop everything else they were doing, uh, to be able to get that information to us, uh, so that we could talk about it that, that very night. Of course, all my department heads, and I thanked them before, uh, JJ for sure, but Walter, this is, uh, I hate to say it this way, but this is your baby. This is, this is something that you've done for the past 14 years that I had been here in, in charge of this, and I'm just, I'm so incredibly impressed in how well you handle yourself, and I just can't thank you guys enough. So, I appreciate it. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I'm gonna hold up announcements for a second. Mr. Jones, you're gonna have to go through this with me, because I'm still concerned that we have missed one.
I've checked, I didn't see where you missed one either.
Let me just go through it and make sure. Because I'm missing one on my script. Yeah, okay, so, I've got the... COLA is 155. The Personnel Board is 156. The, the changes of the Personnel Board?
Yeah.
156. Oh, one is 157.
You did miss one.
See?
Yeah, I see it now.
All right. So which one have I missed?
I, I think you missed...
Did we miss one?
One or two.
I think we missed General Fund One.
Well, no, General Fund, General Fund is one.
Does the COLA include both of those?
So you called it out, General Fund, COLA, and Bonus. I wrote it down as such. That's why I didn't think you'd missed it at first.
Got it.
But now, when you read it and said COLA only, but if it encompasses both, then you're good.
General Fund One includes the COLA. We don't need a separate resolution for the COLA, separate from General One, Mr. Burgett, or...
The way that, the way that I'm reading this is, the first resolution that you asked for was for the COLA, which was recommended from Finance, and it was approved.
Mm-hmm.
Then the second one for General Fund you asked for was the approval of the General Fund budget, which included the resolution to the Personnel Board requiring the job class changes. If, if you include that all as in one resolution for General Fund? Because it is, it is in the General Fund.
Right. Okay. As long as we don't need a separate resolution for it, I'm good. I just want to make sure that you don't need one for any reason with the...
A separate resolution for the Personnel Board?
Correct.
We, we did request that there be a resolution for the Personnel Board, if it was needed.
All right.
We don't know if it's needed at this point yet.
All right.
And I, I thought that you included that in that.
So...
That was 156.
Correct.
156, yes. Yeah, and then we didn't get into, into the General Fund overall approval until 157.
Yeah, you called that out separately.
Right. So then 158 is Fund Two?
That's right.
And 159 is Fund Four?
Uh, I thought 158 was...
I, I have that different.
I do, too.
I have the, I have the General Fund as 56, the grant is 57, seven cent gas tax is 158.
That's what I had, too.
I had Grants Fund 157.
So let's go, let's go back. 155 is the COLA.
Yes.
156 is the Personnel Board. 157 is...
Grants.
Grants. So we need to go back and do General Fund One, is what we need to do.
Okay. I think that's the only one we're missing.
I think it is, too.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
While we're just all confused here? As long as I've been around, our budget's been somewhere between 55 and 60 million. Is that, is this 112 million, are, what we would consider our budget now, or is that because we've got some other things in there, like debt service and things like that, that are, is our budget over...
You're probably thinking of just capital.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the past?
Yeah.
Your thing about the General Fund, the General Fund is 63 million.
Yeah.
So that's, that's typically, you know, we have increased that, um, with revenue, but, you know, we've got our general obligation warrants that are part of it, 112. You've got capital, you've got all, all the other funds. I can't believe we've missed General Fund.
Well, that's why I wanted to go back and make sure, and that's my fault. But, uh, so anyway, I'm gonna get you to do a report on the General Fund.
Well, then, we're five to zero on the General Fund.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to zero, and that's gonna be Resolution 22-173.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, everybody, and I apologize for getting off track there. All right. Everyone think we're on track now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Let's make sure we get that up first.
Yeah. That's kind of a big thing. All right. All right. Uh, Mr. Gualtin? You got any announcements?
Uh, I'll set public safety for after Finance next Monday. So, um, the only comment I would have would be to continue raining down praise upon Robert and Melody, and, and it also starts from beneath them as well, because it's, it's a general mentality in the city to operate, you know, in an efficient manner. So that all pushes up to the department heads, you know, I'd like to thank the department heads as well for, you know, surveying what was ahead of us this year, making smart decisions with their requests, their, with their capital plans, um, you know, and, and a lot of departments did a really good job of, of pushing those forward in an appropriate manner, so I, I really appreciate the hard work that went into that. Excited for the changes for employees, the COLA's awesome, uh, the merit increases, everything that Walter outlined, but also wanted to thank Walter and, uh, Mr. President. Walter, I don't think everybody notices, when Walter comes in to sit down on that meeting, he has a sheet of paper that looks like he bled on it. Or two. So all the, the, the hard work that goes into it beforehand, and, and I know that's, you know, there's a chorus of people behind you to help make that work, but, uh, and to Mr. President for helping corral the children and make sure we behave. But, uh, the best takeaway from this year, I learned the difference between ambulance and ambulatory.
Yeah.
No one will make that mistake again.
Who, who knew we could spend so much time talking about that? I think I went and had a snack and came back. We're still talking about it.
Still talking about it.
That, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gier?
I do not have any announcements, other than just, please do go by Sims Garden if you don't go in the fall, it's beautiful there, the pumpkins are beautiful, the, the space for kids to get their picture made, and Amy would love to thank you for, uh, your, uh, budget contributions this year, and she'd love to see everybody, so that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Alma?
Well, I just want to thank, uh, Counselor Jones for all his work on our budget. I think, uh, his leadership is tremendous, and he guides us through this process, as well as everyone else, and my fellow Finance Committee mates for carrying the load there. It's a lot of, um, thoughtful deliberations, and I'm also grateful to the city employees and the residents who live here, and that's why we do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Um, I, I don't really have much tonight, other than to offer condolences to, uh, Stacy and to, uh, Counselor Alamon for, um, a little hometown beatdown a couple of weeks ago in, in football. We invited Michigan State and promptly pounded them, um, and got back into the rankings for the first time in a year, so, um, and we also played Kent State, which Georgia played, and we beat them by more points, so, um...
Clearly, you should be number one.
I'm thinking that's where we deserve to be ranked right now, but we will see. Uh, welcome back to football, and, um, but yeah, thank, thank you for everybody, um, you know, for sending through budget hearings, I was only able to make a couple, and, and I understand, obviously, some of them had to be, times had to be moved around, and, um, we have to be flexible with that, but, um, I know it's a process over a year, so, thank you.
And, uh, you said in public works after public safety?
Yes, public works, uh, yes.
Okay.
After public safety, sorry.
All right. Thanks. Mr. Sims?
I would just like to echo praise for department heads, all city staff, Melody, Robert, Finance Committee, Dr. Jones, for the work on the budget. I mean, I can see it now, Walter and his family are gonna be gathered at the holidays decades from now, going through minutes of meetings, and they're gonna say, Walter, tell us, why did General Fund One get approved at 173 versus 156? And he's like, well, let me tell you a story about that.
After the vouchers.
I just say that because, I mean, honestly, things don't always go smooth, but people take the time to get it right, and I appreciate that, and following, you know, through and getting things right, you always take the time to do so. So, thank you, President Wyatt, Dr. Jones, everyone, for your work on the budget.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
And that was a great example of, we, we each, we all watch our backs, I mean, take care of each other, make sure that we, we don't miss anything. So it, it really wa, it really was a team effort, so thank you for all, all the kind comments, uh, you know, I love doing it, so, uh, but anyway, Finance is gonna be at 5:00 next week, we're gonna, it's time to get to work, so, uh, that's all I have tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Um, have, have, you know, having been part of this now for a lot of years, um, I think, you know, and the, the budget always starts with the mayor's budget for us, so it's always such a comforting thing to know that we're starting with a quality budget to, to go with, because I think there are a lot of cities where it doesn't go like this. I think there's a lot more, um, changing and, and rearranging, and so it's always so nice to get a budget that we know we can trust to start with, and then, and then, you know, uh, Walter keeps us on task and, and gets us through it, and it's, it's hours and hours of time, but it, it, it really does, if you are in there, if you're in that room and you're listening and you're paying attention, you learn so much more about the city workings than you do if, if you're not there. So it's just such a benefit to me to really get in the weeds and, and learn all those things. So I just appreciate everybody's hard work, the many, many hours, and I'm not gonna be sad not to be up here every night of the week, to be honest. Um, special issues after, uh, public works, so, for next week.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Nelms?
Yes. Um, everybody has a lot of strong suits here, and Walter, of course, Finance is yours, and the Finance Committee, so thank you for that. And then cha, changing up the tone just a tad bit, I want to talk about the Homewood High School Band. They celebrated 50 years of the Homewood Band. It wasn't just a banner saying 50 years, let's come celebrate and, you know, put up a bunch of signs that say 50. The band's theme show is centered around the 50 years. At part of the show, they get out every year that the band has been in existence. Just set your mind here for a moment and think about it. At the anniversary on Friday night, instrumentalist color guards of the, um, drum majors, and over 75 Star Spangled Girl alumni returned to perform with the band, and it was not a mess at all. They were very synchronized, organized, you wouldn't mistake it for the, you wouldn't mistake them for the band, because they blended in so well, and there was so much thought and planning put into it, and it was just beautiful. And the most beautiful thing to me is that, you know, I get all, you know, teary-eyed and emotional about things like that, when I see things come together, but I overheard my daughter and some of the Star Spangled Girls say, oh my God, did you see the lady who came from like 19 blah, 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 and she was next to her daughter, who was a Star Spangled Girl, and they were emotional, like the current band members were appreciative and emotional about how that night turned out, and it was just absolutely beautiful, and I just wanted to share that, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Ms. Andrus?
I agree. That was outstanding, and, uh, there were four million six-year-old little girl cheerleaders also out there, were you guys there? It was like, uh, this, our city, the average age of our city is about eight. There were so many children everywhere, but it was an amazing night, and congratulations to the band for going to Dublin St. Patrick's Day Parade in 2024, so it was pretty amazing. Um, thank you so much, I've really enjoyed spending my entire month of September with you guys, that's what I'm gonna do every Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursdays, so anyway, thank you all for the work on that, and, um, I do need to set P and D, so please set that for after special issues.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Harden?
I will say that I missed Friday night, because I had to be in Auburn for the parent weekend, but my wife was out there, so I really have no idea what, how that worked, but, uh, she came back without any broken legs or anything, so I hope it worked out well. Um, I, I do wanna echo what all else has, everybody else has said, I, I'm, I'm concerned about Loca, Loca, life on city council after Walter, okay? So, uh, it, you know, if you realize how much time he's put into this, but beyond just our committee, before we ever get there, you know, probably meeting with the mayor, understanding all these things, i- it, it is what makes our city tick, and, and I do also want to thank the mayor, that they had some stories of previous mayors long ago long ago who would put stuff in the, in the budget just to make the mayor look good. And Walter would have to pull it out and make Walter look bad. So thank you, Mayor, and, and the staff, and, and Robert and Melody. Y'all get a vacation. I don't know if I can officially give you one, but you get a vacation, so thank you guys.
I don't want to sound like a broken record here, but first, I want to thank Walter for something else. Thank you for leading this, me, this group the last meeting while I was, couldn't stand